All right, good evening, everybody. This is an official county meeting, so I would like to open the meeting. So we're officially open now. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. We've got some of the county department heads here to answer some questions. Anything about water, sewer, the reservoir, anything that you might want to talk about. And I've got Frank Baker here, and he may want to say a few things, and we have some questions he can answer a lot of questions today. I just want to say, I want to appreciate everybody coming. I want to talk about real quick just a few things that you know I've accomplished in the last three years. The last three years since I've been a commissioner, we have gotten sewer in Sunland, which was a huge deal and took a long time. I even understand, Laurie, that the check has come from...
They have.
Dallas Millworks has signed up.
They have signed up as a customer.
So we've got three now? Two?
Two.
Two now, so I'm hoping we expect more. And that's a huge deal. That's a company that was going to leave the county. They were on three septic tanks, having to pump them constantly, about $1,500, I think, almost a month. And so this is a good deal. This is something that was near and dear to my heart, is I can't believe that we actually had industrial parks in the county that didn't have access to sewer. I mean, it doesn't make sense. We're trying to attract businesses to the county, and three things I feel like we really need to do that, of course, is you've got to have water, you've got to have fiber optics, and you've got to have sewer. So those are important things that we really need to be focusing on. As a commissioner, that's something that I support strongly, and I'm committed to. Those things, I would rather see us spend money on that, if we're going to spend money on anything, that's the kind of things that are going to help bring the right kind of businesses to the county, and that's what we're trying to do. Yes, we are a veteran community. Some people talk about that like it's a bad thing. It's not necessarily a bad thing. It's good to be a veteran community, but we want to be able to optimize the jobs that we have, and we don't have as many jobs, and give people the opportunity to work here in the county. So that's what we're working hard to do. Let's see, also, we were able just recently, and when we vote, next coming week, for the no-kill, the pets for Pauling. And I know a lot of people aren't interested in that, and they couldn't care less about cats, but if you saw the meeting Tuesday, you would have seen that it is important, and every county that has done this is saving money. Because either you're going to kill the cats and dogs, or you're going to help them get adopted and find places, or you're going to have a trap, a trap neuter spade and release program, vaccinating release program. And it actually saves money. If you understand, we're going to have something in the county, we're going to have a rat problem, a cat problem, or a snake problem. So I personally kind of like the cat problem. I said, the cats, hey, nothing against snakes and rats, but yeah, I prefer seeing the cats than one of the other two. So we have a program like myself, I have some land, it's got a barn on it, don't have a cat there, but we'll go take a feral cat, and once they pick it up, they'll take it to my barn, and I will kind of adopt that feral cat and keep it there, but then it would also help keep the population down at my barn, sort of mice and the rats. So there are good programs, and we're starting a pilot program, we're going to see how it goes for a couple of months, make sure it works like it has everywhere else, but if it does for us, what it's done at Cobb County, it's going to be an amazing program. Other things we've done to attract business, we're in the process of trying to get all the business license online, something that needs to be done, should have been done a long time ago, I know you're clapping, it should have been done. We need to be a more friendly environment for businesses to come here and open up and be able to run. Which also leads to the fact that we got to have an atmosphere in the home office that leads to that, and I think Frank has been very positive in changing the atmosphere at home office to do that. We've got a lot of good people at home office, but it's not something they have understood in the past. So we're working on all those areas. Unfortunately, you can't change everything overnight, we're picking as many things as we can. We've had some big changes in the marshal department, been very positive, we've changed some things around the marshals, some things they used to be, I never understood why business license weren't in the marshal department, I never understood that. No longer is it in the marshal department, we have moved that. The marshals are taking a more active role on code enforcement, and that's important. We have a lot of places in the county where people just violate the codes, and this hurts our neighbors, it hurts other people in the county. We need to make sure that people are following the ordinances we have, they're taking it very seriously, their attitude first is to, hey, get with the people, try to make them comply, you know, it's not there to just beat up on them and make them feel bad. We want to make them understand why we have the codes we do, why we have the resolutions we do, why you need to follow them. And we try to work with them, and if they just refuse, or they keep abusing us, then yes, since it's in the marshal department, now they can crack down on it. So our marshals aren't going to be on the road as much trying to stop speeders and drunk drivers and domestic stuff, but we're going to leave that to the sheriff's department, and they're going to be a lot more active on code enforcement, keeping the codes and people following them, so that our community will be a nicer, safer place to live. And with that, I guess Frank, if anything you want to add, so go ahead and bring you up and let you say anything you want to say, or you plan on saying anything?
Anything you want to say.
Well, I'm just glad to be here, and we have a little spring in our step, for the first time in a long time, and working with great folks like George and Laurie, and all the commissioners, I've got another commissioner in the back here, but all of us working together, and we have this concept now that we kind of rolled out when Scott Green and I made our transition over, and we refer to ourselves internally as Team Pauling. And so it's a mindset, just trying to change that mindset, like Commissioner Klev was talking about with, just with the marshal service, changing how they think, and how they want to, you know, go out there every day and do their job. And what's the ultimate goal? Is compliance. It doesn't necessarily mean a ticket. It means sometimes just working with people, and getting people to understand what the code is and what the violation may be, and it's not all about writing tickets. So we've made some internal changes, as he's mentioned, and so we're really pleased with that, and getting good support from, internally from our folks. So we do have a little spring in our step. And Commissioner Ponnell's in the back, and I'll never forget what he told me the night that they said, hey, we want you to come over here and work with us. He told me, he said, you need to put your track shoes on. And that was about six months ago, I think, right now. And I had my track shoes on a little earlier today, we were in the forest, and I'm sure that he's going to want to talk about that, because we have some exciting things going on in the Pauling Forest. There was some really interesting stuff that we're working on with KSU and some other folks. But we have been running, and these guys have all been running, our department heads have been running, our employees are being run. So patience, bear with us, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but we're changing our mindset, and we're having a lot of things that we're doing internally, we're looking at the procedures that we have had before, and they haven't worked. And so we're addressing those, and we're all working together as teams, we have teams and task force internally that we're working together, especially with business license, and some really cool things that we're going to come out with with business license to help our citizens. And, you know, we want to make sure that it's a great place for everybody to live and work and play, as the mission statement says. But I appreciate it, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We did go out in the woods today and play around, Frank and I, Micah Gravely, and Laurie, and several other people.
Ron Davis.
Ron Davis was there, Dr. Newkin was there.
Yes.
Chad of Chatty Tech, Bill from Kennesaw, I don't know his last name.
Enson.
Bill Enson from Kennesaw. And just listen to them talk, and I know I will butcher this, but where we are in Pauling County, and y'all jump in and help me out if you can, we're in the middle of three ecosystems coming together. And so you've got the Blue Ridge, and I can't remember what one...
Ridge and Valley.
Ridge and Valley, and then Piedmont, and we're considered Piedmont mainly. But because they've merged together right here in Pauling County, it's created a unique forest, and it's amazing. I'll tell you, I was out there today, and we went down to Raccoon Creek, and there's like 43, 43 known varieties of darters, okay? Saying it right, right?
Right. The total species of fish is 43, and there's...
Total, okay, we can look at everything, okay? And there's like five darters, that's right.
Like five darters.
And two of them are on the...
One's on the dangerous species list, and the other one...
Threatened.
Yeah, the other one's threatened. And the other one's threatened. But they're surviving pretty well up here, and it's just really neat to see all that. And you're down there, and it's like, man, it's hard to believe that you're actually 38 miles from downtown Atlanta, because it's like you're 100 miles away, and it's beautiful, and it's pristine, and it's neat. And then we drove down the road, and when we got off the road, went down Brushy Mountain, then we drove three miles through the woods. And then when we get down there, though, we're right beside the Silver Comet Trail, it's not far away, so it's kind of neat. So tourism is something we really need to be focused on, and that's going to be something, I think, that more and more people are going to be attracted to, if we can start bringing these things out, people understand what we've got to offer. We leave there, and then we go over to the Sheffield Wild Management Area, and it's a little ways away, and it's up on top of mountain. So we're down here, and now we're way up high, and it's totally different. Now it's almost like a totally different climate, everything's totally different. And they've got these pine trees, and I know I can't pronounce them, y'all, what is it?
Montane Longleaf.
Montane Longleaf. Montane Longleaf pine trees. And I've never seen anything like them in my life, and it's amazing. They don't grow everywhere, but they come out of the ground, and they look like monkey grass, and they're that way for 10 years, 10 years before they do anything. And then they love to have a forest fire come through there, and the forest fire actually makes them germinate and take off. And once they get to that point, they'll grow like four or five foot in one year. And then you see them out there, the tall, six, seven feet tall, and they just look funny, and they get real tall, but these trees actually love forest fires. Forest fires actually help them, and they were real plentiful a long time ago in that region, because we had the forest fires, a lot of them were caused by lightning, but now if lightning strikes, they go put the fire out. So now they're back to doing controlled burns, trying to stimulate these trees, so we can have this forest of these pine trees. And it's just amazing. There's a squirrel up there, we didn't get to see one, but it's called a fox squirrel. I never heard of it, they're black and white, and they say they're about this big, and they're not around people, but they only exist up there. There's a darter that they, a DNA, the DNA they found in the creek down below, that is not listed anywhere on any of the tables or...
The registries.
Registries, okay? So they're having to put that on the registry, because it's DNA they have found. It's a real neat area, and it just shows how, to me, how special Pauling County is. I've always thought it was a special place, and I think it just really just proves it, okay? But you've got places like Kennesaw and Chatte Tech who would like to have some type of a structure out there, so that they can do all this studying, and that's one thing they've been trying to talk to county, and we're trying to see what we can come around. There's 100 acres that were at Raccoon Creek and what's the other creek?
Sepulveda. Pegamore.
Pegamore Creek come together, and that's where a lot of this stuff happens, and they're trying to say, okay, maybe we need to have some kind of a educational center there, or either at the reservoir, or maybe something that's, you know, smaller boat, so that the colleges can come out here. The DNA was actually found by one of our high schools, right?
Right.
Working with Kennesaw. So it's unreal what they're doing out there, and this is something I think we probably need to get behind and really focus on even more. And I even brought the show and tell, because I love a pine tree. This is the average pine cone from those trees. They're all over the ground up there, I mean, just walk around, it is huge. I mean, if I had to cut grass, it'd destroy my lawnmower, so I guess it's good they're going to grow up there and down here.
Is there a DNR agent here, I think? You could be arrested.
Yeah.
Better go put a backburner.
Yeah, I picked it up. Katie was there, and she's with...
She's with the Georgia Conservancy.
Georgia Conservancy.
And they work with the DNR.
Yeah, so I said, now you're up to State Park, I can get arrested, I took her out there, and she said, well, we're not at State Park, so you can take it. So she said, yeah, we can take them, and I think everybody pretty much grabbed one and took them, because they're just amazing. So that's the kind of things we're trying to do, we're probably having a vote on that pretty soon, there's going to be some matching grant money, and maybe some other people putting in money. There has been $90 million, enough they said?
Yes.
$90 million federal money poured in here, because everybody in this country, we even got money sent to us when Alaska was competing for it, but they picked here because of all those different species that we have, that DNA, and all the things that are so neat here, where these three systems come together. They say you can be up there and every once in a while you can see a black bear, okay? I didn't see one today, but I wouldn't have, I probably took a picture of it. I wanted to see the squirrel, but they said they jumped real far, but I didn't get to see one of those either. So it's just really neat, that's something probably voting on is something that would really help, I think, with the education. I do think that Dallas is going to be an educational mecca one day, I think Dallas is going to be a college town, and all this happening here is just going to be a positive for us. It's going to give us an opportunity to attract more tourists, more tourism. The Silver Comet Trail's close to it, the reservoir's close to it, the waterfall's close to it, and if you hadn't seen our waterfall, you know, that waterfall was beautiful to me, and I was amazed the first time I went out there, because it was as tall as it was. I never thought it'd be as high as it was, but it's beautiful. So these things that we need to build on to attract tourism, and that's going to help people come here and spend money. People love to ride bikes and go to these places, and so it's going to be awesome. Now, one thing, I was talking right at the end, I was talking to Katie, I said, Katie, I've got a question for you. I said, if we get the reservoir built, and all this is out here, not part of the reservoir, do you think we could attract eagles and have eagles living in our reservoir? And she said, definitely. And I think that'd be awesome, to have the American bald eagle flying over Pauling County. It'd be great, okay? All right, let's move on to economic development, because I know a lot of people want to talk about that. So economic development is something that I believe a lot in, I've worked hard to try to bring businesses here, I know a lot of people are disappointed in the businesses that we have brought from the last years. We have come out of recession, that's a cold hard fact, just now, residential building is coming back, just now. If you understand economics, and you understand how billing goes, industry always lags behind residential. So when residential goes down, commercial goes down, but after residential, eventually it goes down. When residential comes back, then behind residential will come commercial and industry. So I think we're poised to have some good years, no matter who's in office, we should be able to do good, but we're not going to do good if we can't understand how important, what I've already said, the infrastructure is. We've got to have that infrastructure. So that's something we should be focusing on, something I'd like to see out of the next boss, to have more money going towards infrastructure, and being able to somehow find a way to budget a little bit more towards that every year, too, so that every year we can add a few more miles of water, a few more miles of sewer, a few more miles of fiber optic, and let's just bite this thing off one bite at a time. Because back in the 70s, when all these grants were available to do this, Pauling County chose not to accept them, thought we didn't need them, you know, Polk County did, look where they are. So we're playing catch-up, and we can do it, we just have to plan and do it the right way. So if anybody has any questions about economic development, we can talk about that, too. Yes, Paul?
Just to buy, I know the budget's just, obviously just at its infant stages right now, but...
Right.
Our chairman made a statement in a paper that he might consider putting some money in for sewer. Might? I mean, we're talking about putting sewer in, and we debate whether to put money in. I mean, money, tell me where money is, tell me.
We're going to have to put some money in.
You have no choice, you're talking about it, and he said we might put money in? I mean, you guys have something to say about that, right?
Yeah, it's no secret that, you know, Greystones won't move here, and they're going to put all their facility on the corner of 92 Ridge Road, and they're going to have a campus there, and I've seen the plans for the campus, and it's beautiful, I'll tell you, it's really, really nice. We actually met up in their office in Nogusville, and it's kind of neat, they got a three-story building, but from their third floor, you can see the Atlanta skyline. So when they were talking to us, they said, now you have to understand, we're trading Atlanta skyline for the Hiram skyline, and I said, yeah, y'all are lucky. But they are, and they're willing to give all that up, and they want to be part of Pauling County. Pauling County is the biggest part of their business, and we're going to have to help them...
There's got to be money put in it to put sewer in this county.
Yes, it's going to have to be done, you know?
Because you can't do it.
If we say no to them, why would we do that? I mean, it would make no sense. So yes, you know, we're going to have to help them with sewer, we'll put sewer on that part of 92, which is going to be widened, okay, it's going to be six lanes, and that's going to help that whole area, actually from Bill Crewe all the way down to Ridge Road, and probably a little past Ridge Road, so I expect that to just really take off once happens.
Greystone there's got nothing but to take off, being there with Greystone going.
Yeah, so we look forward to that, and yeah, we're going to have to. I'm on board, meetings have gone well, I think. Probably don't want to elaborate much more than that, but they have gone well. I've had other places approach me about sewer, same thing, you've got businesses that want to come here, and some right off of Ridge Road. So we've tried to talk that, we're working on something there, don't know if that's going to happen, haven't given up on it, it's all part of negotiation and trying to, you know, get everybody happy and satisfied, everybody paying their fair share, so...
Has a bond ever came up, and all these big discussions float, a bond in a county, put sewer in a county, be done with it? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as a comment.
Laurie, you might want to address that, right?
From the water enterprise fund standpoint, we just issued bonds for, to build the reservoir, and we had to meet something called the parity test. So we're not in a position today to issue more debt on the water system itself.
Right, right. So we might have to wait a while on that. But let me say something about this, too, because there might be some people that still think, do we really need the reservoir? Well, it was a referendum on the ballot, the voters passed it. So to me, that's all you need to know, because the voters want it, so, you know, you do it, but you try to do it the best job you can to save as much money as you can. When I first got elected, though, I went to Cobb County, and I met with Glenn Page, and talked to him, and I said, Glenn, if you were in my shoes, and this reservoir was coming up as a topic, what would you do? He said, well, y'all are crazy if you don't pass it. He said, now, don't get me wrong, I'm going to lose you as a customer, but you're crazy if you don't. So I was in your shoes, yes, Vernon, I would be for it, and I would do everything it takes. And he said this, and this, and now, okay, I listened to that, but then he said this, this really caught my ear, he said, let me tell you what, if you don't do it, though. He said, if you don't do it, he said, your infrastructure needs a lot of help.
It's terrible.
He said, it's not in good shape, it needs to be redone. He said, and if you don't do your own reservoir, we're going to come over there and we're going to fix your infrastructure, but we're not going to pay for it.
We're going to pay for it.
He said, y'all are going to pay for it. And I thought, I said, well, if we're going to pay for the infrastructure for Cobb County, why not do it for ourselves? And that sold me, that day, 100% on the reservoir, because I thought, if we're going to have to do that, if we're going to have to pay for it, then, hey, let's make it ours, let's claim it, so that it's ours, and we can control it, not Cobb. Maybe one day we sell water back to them, okay? We'll still always have the option to buy water from Cobb, and they'll have an option to buy water from us and Douglas and all that, that's all still going to be in the works, correct?
And we'll be buying water from Cobb and Marietta for several years, as we continue to develop our infrastructure.
Correct, okay, so that's still going to happen, but this is something we need to do to become self-sufficient ourselves as a county. Yes, Frankie?
How long before we will get any water out of the reservoir, do you think, to be used in Pauling, any part of Pauling County?
Twenty...
Before the end of next year, before the end of 2019.
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
This time next year, we'll be filling the reservoir.
Why are we buying water from Cobb if we're going to be on our own in 19? What are we, why is that?
Because we won't have all the infrastructure in place.
Okay.
This is a process that's going to be done. There's a lot of pipes that need to be redone, we've got some bad situations with pipes, so, and all that needs to be redone, reworked, and you're changing the direction of the flow of water, correct?
That's correct.
And that makes a difference, too, because now the water's coming from Cobb this way, now it's going to come back down, so...
Also want to have an emergency situation, if you have a crisis, and you want to have a, you've got to have a backup situation, so that's the backup situation. Laurie, you can probably expand on that a little bit.
We will, today we buy water through about seven connections. We anticipate that once the reservoir comes on, we'll still maintain about three or four of those connections with Cobb Marietta.
And that's with Cobb?
That's Cobb Marietta Water Authority, and that we will continue to have that. And we're talking with them about longer-term needs, because we're going from being their sole source customer, or their second-largest customer, to being a non-sole source customer. And they have to be able to predict what we need, too, so that we're working very closely with them right now, trying to sort through those issues and figure out our longer-term plan with them.
Yeah, and as a commissioner, too, I want to tell you this, but I'm going to kind of keep it in this topic, we kind of changed it slightly a little. There is a thing called the Sweetwater Basin Moratorium. That Sweetwater Basin Moratorium was signed before I got in office. It is one of those things that has a double-edged sword. What this says is, okay, if anybody's going to build anything in the Sweetwater Basin, which runs from Hiram all the way over to Cobb County, all the way back down to the Georgian, all on this side of the county on the border, anything built has to be sewed to Cobb County. Signed before I got in office, okay, I didn't sign that, I didn't have any part of it. But like I said, it's one of those things that has a double-edged sword. Because of that, it makes a lot of industry, housing, very expensive, because if you're going to build, you've got to pay the tap feed to Cobb. You've still got to pay a tap feed to Pauling, too. So it's kind of like a double whammy for those people, and correct me if I'm saying it incorrectly, but I think so far it's right, right? And that upsets a lot of people, and I can understand it upset them, but we didn't have the infrastructure at the time to handle it, and I don't know the whole reason it went through, but what we do have is that in place. So if someone comes into this Pauling County, and I'll give you an example, Burnt Hickory, does everybody know where Tidwell Farm is? Tidwell Farms, we're in Pauling County, I know you know it, 160-plus acres. It was actually purchased about right before the crash by the same people who invested and helped do the middle lake over in Villarico. So they still own it to this day, but things have changed. So they wanted to do a marill lake-type residential place there, but now to do it, it has to be sewed from there to Cobb County, down by Sweetwater Creek, okay? It has to be done. Now, if they technically do bigger lots and pay and put septic tanks in, which I would not be for, because then once someone has septic tanks, they never get on sewer, when sewer comes, and eventually we're going to have to put sewer out there. If they do that, though, the cost, you're paying for a septic system, and you're still paying the tap feed to Cobb, I don't think they'd pay the tap feed to Pauling at that time. They wouldn't do that until actually we had the sewer, right?
Residential, we've got, they've paid the whole thing.
They paid the whole thing on residential, okay, okay, on residential, they had a fair thing. So you see what that would do to the price of a house. So it's going, if you've looked at our area, which is mostly post-three, it goes summoned over to post-two, but you're not going to see a lot of starter homes being built here right now because of that reason. Just a simple fact of all the sewer and the cost of Cobb County, Pauling County, and the septic tank, you're pricing someone out of the price for a house, which is okay for us right now, because that's fine, we've got a lot of housing here, most people are really looking at other places in the county. It will help hold our property values up, okay, because there's not a lot of housing if you, if it's here. Now, if there's a subdivision that's got empty lots, of course, they can go in there and buy those lots and build, their grandfather did, okay? But you can't start a new development without abiding by the Sweetwater Basin Moratorium. It does affect business, and that's where it's kind of hurting us a little bit, too, because businesses have to go by the same rules. They can also go ahead and do a septic, they could, but businesses, if you can work with them, a lot of businesses are interested, and they're willing to maybe invest in some of the sewer, and they'll say, okay, you know, sewer's going to cost 1.7, you know, I'll tell you what, we'll throw in 500,000. And it's a negotiation process, and hopefully they do it, and if you get more people coming in, they can help put that cost, too. But sewer never pays for itself, and a lot of people think it does, but it doesn't. There's always an upkeep to it, and we don't make money off of it, do we? No, we do not, okay? But it's a necessity, we have to have it to attract those businesses. I would have loved to seen, we now have $9 million almost in that movie studio. What would that $9 million have done if we had put in infrastructure? What would that nine million dollars have done if we'd have put it in infrastructure? What if we could have done that instead, okay? Maybe one day it will pay for itself, but that's not something I would support. The things I support as a commissioner are the infrastructure, so that we can attract business. And that's how you attract business. That's it. That's simply it. You have a great environment. We've already talked about what the great green spaces this county has, and what it's gonna do, and how people love that kinda stuff. You wanna live here, live close to that kinda stuff. And we have the infrastructure, we could attract those businesses, they would love to have their families living here and being able to take advantage of those things, okay? Any questions about economic development before we move on? None at all, okay? Kinda tied in with economic development, I wanna shift now to the roads, okay, and talk about transportation. We do have Highway Ninety-Two being widened, and there are some holdups on it. I found out yesterday, and I think, George, I think you're aware of this, and I meant to ask you before, it seems like there's some problems with the bridge that's going under the railroad over at Douglas County, and now the state has set that back for two years, two years. I hate that, because we thought it was gonna be open running in about a year, but somebody found some law that they had missed.
It's a, it wasn't crash-worthy enough for Norfolk Southern, so G-DOT, Norfolk Southern odds right now, overall, that solution, so it's...
Oh, they're still trying to work that out, yeah. Okay, so they had said, you know, give us two more years on that. It's not really slowing down the rest of the project, though. I think a lot of people think it is. It's not. So we could have all our six lanes and run right into the bank where the railroad track is. So I hope they have an H-ramp where you get to, okay? But, and that's just reality, and that's life, and that's the way it is. But even if we get our six lanes open, I think it will help our traffic flow, and it will block down over this county anywhere meets the railroad track. So that's a positive, because that's gonna bring people and businesses into the county. I really mean businesses. I've already had a business approach me who loves the idea that six lanes all the way to I-20, they have a business that's really very tourist-attracted, okay? So they would have at times when they'd bring a lot of tourists into the county. Is it gonna happen? I don't know. But the same thing, they're looking at it, they were talking about a ten-million-dollar investment, and hopefully things work out with them, but the big thing with them to do is, okay, we're gonna put ten million in it, how y'all gonna help us with sewer? Plain flat what they said. Right, Lauren? So that's something we have to work on, too. And we will. If they get more serious, we'll get more serious, we'll just have to see what they decide. Of course, we would have to bring it up to the public, and some people may not want that many tourists here, so we'll just have to see. But at least we have the opportunity. They like the quick access from I-20, they like Polling County, they really want it in Polling County. There's a reason for that, I won't share that reason tonight, but I was impressed with the reason that they wanted to come to Polling. So, like I said, I think we're really, if we just tweak a little thing, a few things, I think Frank's got us on the right track, I think Scott being supportive, Laurie, I have the most respect for, and George, Scott always says you're gonna do a better job than him, and I think that's probably gonna lead true in the long run. But we are. And is there anything you wanna add on roads, or anybody have any questions while he's here? I know Virginia got with you, okay, and that's been a problem.
Just one thing on Ninety-Two, I think right now the schedule is, the Douglasville section is up 2020 finish, and also the Polling is 2020 finish, so hopefully they will align up nicely with...
Well, that's true, that's one thing, it's making it all gonna work out at the same time. And I do wanna say this, because we are now in the bat season.
In the bat season.
Had a lot of rain, okay? So, yeah, they were gonna try to have the road cleared on Ninety-Two all the way up to Nevo, right? Where the church, right there by Nevo, on both sides. But because we're in a bat season now, they're not gonna be able to finish clearing any more of it. So it's gonna stop where it is now, Bill Crewe, they'll keep working on that part, and then come this fall after the bat season.
Those pesky federal laws, as they get away.
I'm one of those people that love bats, and we played with them when we were kids, but man, you know how many mosquitoes they'll eat? They eat tons of mosquitoes. I research them all the time. It's like a thousand mosquitoes or something, a certain amount of time a night, yeah.
Yeah, so they can't do any clearing work and take down the trees where their habitat and, you know, during the summer, the spring, summertime, so they'll start up again in the fall.
I know the sweet I have been clearing, that like piles of debris, they look like dead kids to me. So are those gonna be burned, or do you have to shred them all?
I'm not sure what G-DOT plans for that.
I was told, I was told yesterday they were gonna start shredding them, and they're in the process of shredding them now, and they'll finish shredding all that, because they keep shredding that, and they'll get everything shredded and everything grass planted, and they'll continue working on a wider road, but they will not go past Bill Crewe because of the bats, okay? And then at this fall, they'll start back, cutting that, clearing that, shredding that, and the same thing, okay? And I was told that yesterday, so hopefully I've got good info. All right. Anything else you wanna say about roads, or paving?
No, we've got a few projects, you know, going along on the local routes. We talked about it a couple of board meetings ago, we have an active project at Burnt Hickory, Stout Parkway, and then Brownsville Extension. We converted that internally into a multiway stop. We have a lot of crashes at that intersection, so this is intermeasure.
It's a boy's stop now. I've been through it already.
What do you think?
I like it better.
I almost went in it. It's like, oh, we just drive that way every day.
You weren't used to it.
I was like, wow.
We ended up putting up some, or putting down some rumble strips out there, just to try to get people's attention, because, you know, visually, we have message boards and bigger signs, and that didn't seem to work, so something a little more, with a different sensation, where you draw a little vibration, so.
I think this is kinda related. I know that new convenience store's going in there at the corner of Valentine and Bill Crewe.
Correct.
I'm not happy about that, you know that. My concern with that is that it sits there where my kids go to school, and there's already a lot of accidents from high school kids in that intersection. So when you add a convenience store, and you add the kids going in and out of the convenience store, what are you gonna do to help alleviate some of the traffic that we know is gonna increase when you've got all these kids right there and student drugs?
On the Bill Crewe side of the convenience store exit, they have a right-in, right-out access, so there's no left turns coming out of there. And also on the Vergey access, there is no left-out. So we're gonna try to restrict access for right now, so we're gonna get rid of those conflicts. So again, we'll have to monitor this and see how it works as it opens and people get, you know, started using it, but, you know, I can assure you, we'll monitor it to try to mitigate any crash issue as best as we can.
And what the state's done, if you don't mind, to using a lot of these, what are they called?
Our cuts.
Our cuts, okay? And that's where you pull out, and you have to go maybe about a hundred yards down the road, and then you make a U-turn. I know it's a little bit inconvenient, but they have been proven to be very safe.
Yeah, if you have a median, it's great. Again, it takes a little getting used to, and it's restrictive, but it stops the crash problem, which is what they're designing.
Yeah, I don't think we have any roundabouts in post-three going up anytime soon.
We got a shared post-two, three.
Oh, yeah, we're corn.
We got Ridge, Corn, and Bob Hunting. That one right now, we're in the process of acquiring right-of-way and dealing with some of the property owners on their accesses, so once we get those issues ironed out, you know, I'm hoping to let that sometime by the end of the year. So that would be the first big roundabout in Polling County.
Little church right behind the old store, third floor.
That's, we're negotiating right now with access, so.
So we got that going on, and, you know, we have a bridge in the morning side draw that the state approached us for funding. The bridge itself is weight restricted right now for three classes of trucks, and they came to us with an offer saying that if the county would agree to fund half of the right-of-way, that the state would pick up all other costs on the project, so that's about five million dollars. So we're spending one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred, and the state's paying for like five-point-three million, so it's a very good deal that we obviously took advantage of, and right now it's slated to be constructed in the year 2022. And then we can talk about the intersection at Doris and Baker's Bridge and Sweetwater.
Yes, yeah, that one.
That's a tricky thing, that intersection, actually, four corners, the four corners of the intersection, actually in Douglas County. So we're having to work with Douglas County on that, and I started working on that as soon as I got in office, and we were just now. First, Douglas County said, "We don't have any money budget," so, yeah, but we said we would pay for it. We did, we told them we'd pay for it, because it affects our people. Who's gone down Baker's Bridge and had to turn left on Sweetwater? Not my wife and kids, they don't count. If you've done that, though, you can literally sit there two, three lights before you can turn left. So something needs to be done, and it has changed so many times. I think, and you correct me, George, I think where we are now, it's finally been resolved, we're gonna have one turning lane, that turning lane is gonna be turning left on Sweetwater coming south down Baker's Bridge.
Yeah, or actually, we got two. We got that one left turn going left, southbound onto Sweetwater.
Sweetwater.
And then we also have a right turn lane from Sweetwater, turning north onto Baker's Bridge, because that's, in the morning, they turn left, southbound, and in the evening, they go...
Okay, so that's gonna affect one person's property, and that's it.
Right, there's a, what we did is, we took away, we had a northbound right turn lane to remove that from the project to try to reduce the right-of-way impacts. We, Douglas County was, requested that. First of all, they wanted the right turn lane, and then we put it in, and so we...
And they presented back the plan, and they said, "That's what we want, now turn lanes everywhere." And we're like, "We don't need all of this." You know, so we're trying to save money, but we are putting the most of the cost, because they understand that it is our citizens who are affected the most. But they also understand, and they said, "Hey, we understand all those people coming to Douglas County and spending money in Douglas County, so we wanna help, too." We're not putting the whole cost, about half and half. And I think that's fair, I do, okay? And I'm just glad to see that happened. I mean, literally, I started working on that the first week I was in office, and it has taken till now to get that word out, and that's probably because we had a deal with Douglas County. Like I said, the first time I talked to them, they said, "We don't have the budget, come back next year."
If you've seen the condition with Douglas County roads, I agree, they don't have any money.
Well, I don't know. I don't get it. I stand for it.
We got a bath and body works, I don't have to go back there anymore.
And get an Old Navy.
There you go.
Y'all do know that, right? Old Navy.
No.
Where are they going? Just me and my husband been arguing.
Over there by Bath and Body Works, close to it.
We're, this used to be...
Next one.
A real five-o.
Oh.
Yeah, right next to it. And someone told me, someone told me, Dave, we got a Bath and Body Works, we got an Old Navy coming, and what was the other one?
Alton.
Alton, we have Alton, so people...
Alton's there.
It's already here, so people won't be leaving County anymore, they'll be staying here, so that's good.
And they are working on the Old Navy, because I was actually out there today with one of our inspectors, so they're getting busy with that.
What's happened to that light oil store?
I don't know what happened on that.
That was a Hiram.
Yeah, we see a Hiram that was working with it, but, you know, I need to follow up on that.
That corner, it was gonna be an Olive Garden, and that didn't work, and then it was gonna be light oil, and now that didn't work, something's wrong with that corner.
So, one last thing I wanna say. George, I don't know if you know this or not, but I've been talking to Scott for a long time. Hiram's a mess as far as traffic, right? The last one through Hiram on Friday night. Other than Todd, Todd even didn't like it, but, you know, nobody else does, because, you know, it's just all this traffic, like, and here's the thing, too, when I first got in office, I went to Scott and said, "Scott, I understand why in the world is Hiram like this?" And he had explained to me the reason the road's not leveled, because back in the planning days, when Georgia DLT was planning to put that four lane in all the way up, they had looked ahead, and when they looked ahead, their study had showed them that Hiram would never amount to anything, okay? So they missed it on that one. We can even talk why that happened, and I think there's a lot of reasons. Most people say because Duke Hilton poured alcohol. I think it's half the story. I think it's because Kroger and Kmart came in and brought sewer, and Duke poured liquor, so you got those two, and everything took off. But the state of Georgia said it's never gonna happen, so we don't have to spend all the money, it's very expensive, the level of road. So you leave it like this, it's scenic, you're in the country, so it looks pretty anyway. But the reality now is, we got a lot of traffic driving up and down hills, across the other hills and mediums. So I had told Scott a long time ago, and I think he's trying to get this study done by the state of Georgia, because we can't do it without Georgia's help. Yeah, I think he's working on it.
We have 4.2 million dollars that was budgeted towards the study and some implementation.
Okay, and my understanding is, which I recommend, Scott, I would love to see, everybody knows this is a road that runs right there with Home Depot, Sam's, all the way down Folks, Sun Trust, all the way down, right? And it actually goes across Metro Mont and still keeps going, that's a private road. County has nothing to do with it, we don't have to keep it. I do get calls on here once in a while, there's a pothole there, I say, "I'm sorry, it's a private road, we can't do anything for it." But I would like for the county to take that over, okay, and make it a legitimate road and make it an access road. We would have to do a lot of work on it, we'd cost a lot of money, have to cut out some of the ins and outs, because you couldn't just have as many as you do, so it'd be some places you'd get on, some places you couldn't. But get the traffic off the main road and onto that road if people are shopping. Then we can go out to 278, we can get rid of some of the left turns, get rid of half the traffic lights. The way I would see it, I would love to see, is have a traffic light at Bill Crewe, a traffic light at Metro Mont, and then add another traffic light until you got to Lake Road or Home Depot, that'll be the next traffic light. And get rid of all those left turns, so you couldn't turn left there, and use that access road for people who wanna shop. That would, I think, probably keep from having a lot of accidents, I think, because a lot of accidents, I think one of the number-one places is right there in front of Bass Drive. Bass Drive. And it's, you know, it does this there, okay? So that's an option.